I'd like to call this meeting to order. The reorganizational meeting. May I please have a moment of silence? And then we'll have a special prayer for Natasha Tellersmith at this difficult time. And followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to believe in the flag of the United States of America and to repose it on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Secretary, may I please have roll call?
Marlin Milner.
Here.
Olivia Brady. Valerie Scott Cooper. Derek Perry. Sonya Sanders.
Here. The next order of business is the presentations for Bill and Gary, Gary Simpson and Bill Codwell. Could you please come up to the front? So, I would like to start with Willm Codwell first. Willm was currently serving our 2nd district. We are all actually going to be sad to see Will go. He's provided a great deal of insight, leadership, and knowledge. And we want to wish you the best. And we look forward to you being active in Norristown. So, please feel free to join us. And again, thank you for all of your services and all you've done.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So here, we acknowledge you with this to remember us by.
Thank you.
Our next person that we have is Councilmember Gary Simpson, who was serving the 4th district whose term has expired. Gary has served from 2008 to 2015. And Gary, we actually are going to miss you. And your foistressness. Your wonderful personality. And for all of those that like you and those that don't like you.
Wow.
And with Gary, we kind of had a special relationship. He was someone who actually wanted to be my brother, but I'm not sure if that's because he actually saw my family and said, maybe, hey, I want to be with her because I see her family and know who her family is. Or I'm not sure if he just liked me. I don't know.
Family.
What is it? Family? Okay.
Because I don't really like you.
Okay. It's mutual stuff. So needless to say, thank you for your years of service and also your insight and your kindness and your wealth of knowledge. Thank you for Norristown.
You need a flash, sir.
So, Gary, we'll start with you. If you could, say a couple of words. And if you could, keep it a little brief, please. This time?
So, one, I'd like to thank everybody. One, for, I guess, believing in my abilities. I was elected twice, so I think that says a little something. I may have been liked a little bit more than what Sonya would suggest. But I think that Norristown is a great place. I'm not from here. I wasn't born here. But I think I was accepted by a lot of the residents in Norristown for over the years that I've been here. I've been here about 22 years. So, I raised both of my children here. They both graduated from Norristown High School. And I really do, I've grown to really love this community because it has so much to offer and there's so many people that have a variety of talents and gifts to be able to offer this town. It's just the point of getting people to bring those talents and gifts out that will make this town even better than what it is. What it is right now. Not what it was, but what it is right now. I appreciate the work with my fellow councilmembers. Councilman Milner and I, we probably went to Dukes a few times, but I respect his abilities. I'm going to miss him. I'm going to miss Roseanne. Olivia, Chief Talbot. Valerie, I didn't get a chance to really deal with a lot because she's new. Sean is my man. Sean and I, we've done a lot of things. Crandall, thank you for taking this position. You're doing a wonderful job there. And we're glad that you uprooted your family to come up here and work with us. Mr. Perry, Shonora. Jane is my very, very good friend. I've worked with Jane every day probably for the eight years that I've been here. We've had a very good relationship. And Mr. Simonson, thank you for taking this job and guidance, help to guide our COs department. And to Ms. Sanders, she is a wonderful young woman with a lot of talent. I think she's going to do very well for her remaining term here. Hopefully, she runs again. I think you guys have a wonderful person in her. I think she's a very bright woman. I think she's going to do a wonderful job. Just get behind her and work with her. And I think you'll be able to see her talents come out. Thank you.
Councilman Codwell, served from 2006 to 2015.
That's all, 10 years. First of all, before I talk to council at all, really want to express my thanks to Norristown and to the community of Norristown. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve all of you as well as all the people that aren't in this room. It's an honor and a privilege that falls upon one in one's life only rarely. And I'm so very proud to have been able to pick that up and to walk with that. And hopefully, I have served you all well. And I certainly have enjoyed every minute of serving the people of Norristown. Because like Councilman Simpson said, Norristown, I believe, is one of the best places, one of the nicest places in eastern Pennsylvania to live, if not the nicest and best place to live. I grew up and went to school in Norristown, left for a while, and somehow it brought me back. It brought me back because it's a great community and it will continue to be a great community. It has been a privilege to, you know, work through some easy times, some tough times. We had them all over the last 10 years. But one of the things that I am so proud of is that we're leaving this town in a position, really, that it can thrive. And one of the wonderful things that we've left you with is a wonderful council. You have seven people on council now and a staff that I think will serve you very, very well. And I'm so proud to leave them, to finish the job and to do those things. Staff, it has been wonderful working with all of you. And again, I'll echo Councilman Simpson. It has just been a great time, a great run. Thank you all. And again, like Councilman Simpson, I'm not going anywhere. You'll see me around from time to time. And just very proud to be a resident and a citizen here in Norristown. So, thank you.
And I'd please ask everyone who's here to give a little standing ovation, please. Stand up for standing ovation, please. I did. Never mind.
Can we take one of these?
Yes.
Um, when do we sign our speech? When do we sign our speech?
It's next year or next year.
Leave us with a laugh.
Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Moving on to the next order of business would be the nominations for the Vice President As a chairperson of this meeting, I hereby declare Norristown Municipal Council Reorganization Meeting of 2016 in and for the municipality of Norristown now open. The first order of business will be the nomination for Vice President of the Norristown Municipal Council.
I'd like to nominate Derek Perry.
Councilmember Brady nominates Derek Perry. Are there... Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? If not, I declare nominations for the position of Vice President of Norristown Municipal Council closed. The clerk of council will now call roll call and record the votes.
Marlin Milner.
Yes.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Valerie Scott Cooper.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Councilman Perry is the Vice President. Congratulations, sir.
Nominations are now open for President of Norristown Municipal Council.
I would like to nominate Sonya Sanders.
Second.
Councilmember Valerie Scott Cooper nominates Councilwoman Sanders. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? If not, I declare nominations for the position of President. For President Sonya Sanders of Municipal Council closed. The clerk of council will now call the roll call and record the vote.
Marlin Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Valerie Scott Cooper.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
President Sonya Sanders, congratulations.
Thank you. Vice President Perry. Just a few remarks. 2015 was a great year for the municipality of Norristown. So, right now, at this time, we'll begin with the oaths. Can I have, please have Judge Garrett? There he is.
All right. Good evening.
Evening.
I think my voice can carry in this spacious cavernous building that has a lot of history in Norristown and in fact, in this county. County that I've learned to love and in my position as county judge. It's my honor, Derek, to give you this oath. And who is this that we have to your right? Derek, his son, Perry. He says that with definitive certainty. And I'm sure that there's a link here. And so, are you ready to take your oath? It's my honor to give you this oath. I ask you to repeat after me. Raise your left hand. Aye. Repeat your name.
Aye, Derek Perry.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge.
I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Vice President of Council.
Vice President of Council.
For the municipality of Norristown.
For the municipality of Norristown.
With... Need my glasses? Honor and fidelity.
Honor and fidelity.
And will uphold, obey, and enforce.
And will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge.
I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Vice President of Council.
Vice President of Council.
For the municipality of Norristown.
For the municipality of Norristown.
With... Need my glasses? Honor and fidelity.
Honor and fidelity.
And will uphold, obey, and enforce.
And will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race, color.
To a person's race, color.
Or religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age, national origin.
Age, national origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations. All right. It is also my honor, and I just recently met Sonya and the political environment, and apparently, she's doing great things for Norristown already. She presents well. She's got the respect of her fellow companions. Now, Vice President, the rest of council. So, it's my honor to give you this. Who do you have to your right?
To my right, I have my brother Eric Fisher.
All right, Eric Fisher. Are you ready to help and aid your sister in taking this oath as a very important position to President? It's a big position and needs blessings and prayer. Amen, lights. Amen, lights. Don't get me started. All right, please, put your right hand on the Bible, raise your left hand. Repeat after me. Aye. And repeat your name.
Aye, Sonya B. Sanders.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter.
The Home Rule Charter.
Of the municipality of Norristown.
Of the municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge.
I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As President of Council.
As President of Council.
For the municipality of Norristown.
For the municipality of Norristown.
With justice and fidelity.
With justice and fidelity.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color and religious creed.
Color and religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Next order of business is the oath of office for the new councilmembers. And we'll start off with Councilwoman Olivia Brady, who will have Judge Greg Scott.
It gives me great honor, I have to follow Judge Page. It gives me great honor to swear. Olivia, Olivia and I go way back. Our son and I went to school together. And she has a heart for people. And I'm just so proud to be on this dais again with you, again and again. Are you ready to take your oath? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. This is my first one. She's standing with her husband, Craig Ray. Oh, 30 years. Are you ready to take your oath?
Aye.
Aye, Olivia Brady.
Aye, Olivia Brady.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
As counsel at large.
As counsel at large.
For the municipality of Norristown.
For the municipality of Norristown.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Council.
Now, I would like to have Hakeem Jones. Please come forward. And again, we will have Judge Garrett Page.
As the family gathers for Hakeem, let me give you a little background of my association with Hakeem. He's got a lot of supporters, but I'm one of them. Hakeem has helped me in various groups and forums across Philadelphia and Montgomery County. He worked with me in a group of frontline dads and brothers and bosses. Does major things for the community. This guy, I don't know how much, what kind of vitamins you're taking, but good vitamins. I know his mother, too. He comes from a good family breed, and that's what... Hakeem, introduce your circle of protection and love.
My fiancee, my mom goes away, my sister Angela, my brother Martin, Uncle James. My dad's unfortunately not here, passed away two years ago, but I got his twin.
All right, I'm going to ask, who's going to be a Bible holder? All right. Put your left hand on the Bible, right hand on the Bible, raise your left hand. And repeat after me. Aye, Hakeem Jones?
Aye, Hakeem Jones.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
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 In the right. All right. The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
Of America?
Of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter?
The Home Rule Charter.
Of the municipality of Norristown?
Of the municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania?
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge.
I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As District 4 Councilmember.
As District 4 Councilmember.
For the municipality of Norristown.
For the municipality of Norristown.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious.
Religious.
Creed.
Creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Next order of business, I would like to call Heather. Could you please come forward? And we will have Judge Greg Scott.
Truly gives me joy and I...
Truly gives me joy and honor to also swear in Heather Lewis. Heather and I don't go all the way back, but we go back enough. Heather does some great work related to our justice system with respect to participatory defense here in Norristown. And I would encourage all of you, if you don't know about the program, to definitely look into it. It's going to be a beacon for not only Norristown, but in the county, but also it's going to be a model, national model, that they're taking out in California and other parts of the country. So, thank you for that work. Are you... Do you want to introduce the rest of your family?
This is my husband, William, Janay, Nava, Manuel, my son Sevier, and my mother Benny.
Great. Are you ready to take the oath?
I am.
Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I, Heather Lewis...
I, Heather Lewis...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown...
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown...
And the laws of Pennsylvania...
And the laws of Pennsylvania...
And the municipality of Norristown...
And the municipality of Norristown...
That I will discharge the duties of my office...
I will discharge the duties of my office...
As District Two Councilmember...
As District Two Councilmember...
For the municipality of Norristown...
For the municipality of Norristown...
With honor and fidelity...
With honor and fidelity...
I will uphold...
I will uphold...
Obey and enforce...
Obey and enforce...
The laws of Pennsylvania...
The laws of Pennsylvania...
And the municipality of Norristown...
And the municipality of Norristown...
Without consideration...
Without consideration...
To a person's race...
To a person's race...
Color...
Color...
Sex...
Sex...
Religious creed...
Religious creed...
Sexual orientation...
Sexual orientation...
Age...
Age...
National origin...
National origin...
Ancestry...
Ancestry...
Handicap...
Handicap...
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Councilwoman.
So, this has been a bittersweet moment for our outgoing council members, Gary Simpson, Bill Codwell, and Linda Christian, who isn't with us tonight. And I have much respect for Linda Christian. She served her constituents well. She did a great job. And I wish she was here tonight to actually see this reception. So, in regards to the year 2015, it was a good year for Norristown. And in 2016, I hope that it's a better year, and we strive to do better. I look forward to working with our new council members. I feel like we have a great team, and I feel that we'll work well together. So, just a few remarks. I'm honored to accept the President of Norristown Borough Council. This position will include additional responsibilities that I will not take lightly. I will represent Norristown Borough Council to the best of my ability in respect to my colleagues, constituents, with transparency, professionalism, and respect. I would like to thank the constituents of the First District for electing me. I will continue to provide the utmost level of representation to the constituents of Norristown. I would like to extend my thanks to my family, friends, colleagues, and my members at San Agustin Church of Norristown for their continued prayers, support, and words of encouragement as I transition into this role. Again, I would like to thank the council members, Bill Codwell, Gary Simpson, Councilwoman Linda Christian, Councilwoman Olivia Brady, Councilman Marlon Milner, and Councilman, our new Vice President Derrick Perry. So, again, in conclusion, I look forward to representing the borough well, along with my colleagues, and wishing 2016 the best year for Norristown. Thank you.
The next order of business, if I could, have Mr. Jones in regards to the appointments for the following year for Resolution 16-101. I would like to make a motion to approve the Resolution 16-101. Second. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Marlon Milner...
Yes.
Olivia Brady...
Aye.
Valerie Scott Cooper...
Aye.
Heather Lewis...
Aye.
Hakeem Jones...
Aye.
Derrick Perry...
Aye.
Sonya Sanders...
Aye.
Thank you, Madam President. This resolution that you just approved is Resolution 16-101, which appoints the following: The law offices Ashant Kilkenny as solicitor; The law firm of Cozen and Connor as a labor attorney for the municipality; Engineering firm of Penoni Associates as municipal engineer; Law firm of Rudolph Clark as a civil service attorney; The law firm of GNC Legal as environmental attorney; State Street Advisors as our government affairs consulting firm; Crandall Jones as municipal administrator, municipal secretary, right to no officer, and renews his employment agreement dated August 19, 2013; Sandra Grubb as Assistant Municipal Secretary; Roseanne Santangelo as clerk of counsel; Jane Massonier as Director of Planning and Municipal Development and as zoning officer; Shannara Burkett as Director of Finance; Mark Talbot as Police Chief; Thomas O'Donnell as Fire Chief; Charles Sweeney as Fire Marshal; And Hank Sisco as the 2016 Norristown Ambassador. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Madam Secretary, may I have a roll call, please? No, we already did a roll call. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, everyone. That motion is approved for Resolution 16-101. Would a member of council like to make a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So, who?
Meeting adjourned. Order of the regular scheduled council meeting will begin with a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Marlon Milner...
President.
Olivia Brady... Valerie Scott Cooper... Heather Lewis... Hakeem Jones... Derrick Perry... Sonya Sanders...
Here. Madam Secretary, do we have a public comment?
Yes. Howard Scott...
Good evening, Madam President, Secretary, and the full council. My name is Howard Scott. I reside at 345 East Main Street in Collegeville, Pennsylvania. And I'm here before you to discuss a Black history program that we are bringing to Norristown. On the 12th and 13th, I am happy to present to you an educational program that deals with African-American history is American history. And at the Center Theater, we will have a program that would be inclusive of artifacts that depict the struggles and accomplishments of African-Americans and those of abolitionists as well here for educational value for all residents of the city, of the township of Norristown, as well as the entire county. We will also have a program of education to award students who do the study of the concept of Black African-American history, and they will be awarded in just fashion. I do have some information that I'd like to pass out, if that's okay, to the council members, so that you can get a feel for what our program involves. This program is that you're receiving, this is what we call Catch for Knowledge, which will inspire youth to learn more about their heritage. I also have one program which I want to present to the City Council President, and this is an opportunity for the township to get behind this. Of course, it does cost quite a bit of revenue to put this on. I represent True Reflection Ministries, which is not a church or any kind of religious institution, but we do ministry, and we do ministry through our Positive News Magazine, which we have been publishing, and Norristown is one of the recipients of our monthly magazine, which features positive news for a change. Some of you may be aware of my work here in town. I was a resident here for a number of years, and I just recently, a year ago, moved to Collegeville, Pennsylvania. But most of my work that I do in this county is here in Norristown. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Councilwoman Scott Cooper?
Yes, I'm looking at the flyer, and it doesn't give the location.
Okay, there's... Actually, there's two locations. That particular flyer is just for registration for those who would want to participate, and that's why you don't have a location, nor do you have a complete program on that particular flyer. But I will make sure that you do get a complete descriptive one sheet that tells you the five W's and the H. The two locations that we're going to be presenting this is, number one, one of the historical sites here, which is the Center Theater. And at the theater, you're going to have a traveling museum, which I own, and I bring into various communities. And you're going to have things like inventions. Many people know that the traffic signal was invented by Garrett Morgan, but you may not know that he also invented the gas mask. So, we have a gas mask that you will be able to see what that invention looks like, as well as a number of other artifacts and prints and actual working models. The Eining Board was also invented by a Black woman. We have the actual Eining Board depiction of that. So, then you have the second location, which will be at the Vance Center on Cherry Street. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with his facility. It's brand new. And we're going to have three floors, and the entire month long, the availability of people to come to the center and witness a traveling museum and gallery of Black history and American history artifacts that date back to the 1500s. It's very, very well put together. I also present this to a number of other communities, and Newark, New Jersey is also going to be receiving a part of our Black history programs for this year. And we've been there for four years, and they've asked us to come back with two days this year, as well as another wing on the most traveled building in Newark, which is 50,000 people per week, I mean, per day. Now, one of the things that I want to ask the City Council is that you take a look at the opportunity to support this initiative financially. One of the things that I know very well, I've been working in this field of marketing and promotion as a editor-in-chief of the Reflections Magazine, as well as a radio personality. And we need to let people know that do not live in Norristown about the wonderful things that happen here in Norristown. In order to do that, I need to get it up on radio. And I've worked out and operate in agreement with 100.3 FM, and we are going to be having commercials. And we're working also with Dr. Bloxen. We're trying very hard to get him here, because he is one of the major, major Black history figures here in the township of Norristown. We already have confirmation of Josh Colbreth, who will be one of our honored speakers. And we also will be having youngsters that will be putting on skits. One will be depicting Sojourner Truth. There will be a Frederick Douglass. There will be a Martin Luther King. And the list just keeps going on and on and on. So, this is the educational program that we would like for you to consider getting behind us, so that we can do a world of good for the people who are a part of it, as well as those who would take a look at Norristown and know that we are interested in educating and healing our community.
Councilman Milner?
Thank you. Mr. Scott, what I'd want to advise and suggest to you is that you write a letter and include a line item budget, make it addressed to the council president and vice president. Each council member has a discretionary fund out of which they can make non-voted decisions about expenditures, and that might be one way to garner some support and do so. Otherwise, there might be a budgetary decision that's made based on funds in our budget that don't require action in a public meeting, and/or there might be a budgetary action that was taken that would require action in a public meeting. But those are your three options. But I think if you submit a letter in writing to the council president and vice president, include a line item budget that outlines the specific request, those methods could be entertained.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mr. Milner.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you very much. And I'm just going to present to you this...
If you could give them to our clerk.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening. The next order of business is public safety. Chief Talbot, would you mind giving us a brief summary, please, of the handicap parking spaces?
Yes, Madam President. Requesting municipal council approve establishing two handicap parking spaces, one at 1343 Markley Street, the second at 633 Cohen Street. The residents at both of those locations have demonstrated a need for a reasonable accommodation, and we feel parking, handicap parking spaces necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the establishment of two handicap parking spaces.
I would like to make a motion to approve the establishment of two handicap parking spaces... Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I would like to make a motion to approve two handicap parking spaces, and a motion to approve Resolution 16-102, establishing handicap parking spaces at 1343 Markley Street and 636 Cone Street.
I second that motion.
Madam Secretary, may I have roll call?
Marlon Milner.
Yes.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Valerie Scott Cooper.
Aye.
Heather Lewis.
Aye.
Hakeem Jones.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
No. But the minutes, we skipped over the minutes being approved?
Okay. Thank you. So, if we could, let's go back to, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the council workshop meeting held on December 15 of 2015. All in favor?
Aye.
Those meeting minutes are approved. Thank you. Councilman Milner. Next order of business is for code. If I could, have Mr. Simmison go into a brief summary of the HARB certificates.
I'll do them one by one, like we did last time. The HARB certificates, first is 122 West Marshall. These have all been pre-approved by the HARB Board, is to replace some existing windows, install some shutters on the front, some handrails, and a metal decorative gate.
I would like to make a motion to approve 122 West Marshall Street. Second. I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry. That motion is approved for 122, 122 West Marshall Street.
There was a motion, a second, did we, okay, great.
Second is 609 Noble Street. That is also a decorative iron railing for the upper exterior stairs, matching the existing railing. I could just do the last one, if you want.
Oh, I'm sorry.
609 Noble was for an existing, to match and install an existing railing.
Councilman Milner?
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve the HARB certificate for the first address in question. Could we complete that process and then entertain the second and then the third? Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I would like to ask a motion to approve 122 West Marshall Street.
Well, there was been a motion, a second. Just need to call the vote.
So, Madam Secretary, may I have a vote, please?
It doesn't need to be a roll call?
It's not a roll call, no. It's a regular vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries for a HARB certificate, 122 West Marshall Street. Moving on to the second address, for the approval of the HARB certificate for 609 Noble Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion is approved for 609 Noble Street for HARB certificate. The next order of business for the residents of 25 East Marshall Street.
25 East Marshall Street is a HARB certificate for installing pre-approved lighting above an exterior sign.
I would like to make a motion for 25 East Marshall Street to be approved for the HARB certificates of appropriateness. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion is approved for HARB certificate appropriateness of 25 East Marshall Street. Would a council member like to make a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
Aye.
Second. That motion is adjourned.